This July 7th, Jackson County Commissioned Work Session. We have a roll call.
District one, Mr. Guzzo, Mr. President. District two, Mr. Venable. District three, Mr. Miller, President. And District four, Mr. Levell.
President.
I would ask that we keep Mr. Venable and his family in a praise. First item is approval of the, I'm sorry, we'll have our invocation by Mr. Porter. Glad for that.
God our Father in heaven, we're blessed to be here. We're blessed to be Americans. We've just been through this celebration of our independence and our freedoms. We thank you for those. We thank you for the freedom to gather together to discuss these matters of public interest. Thank you for our other freedoms, to bear arms and of religion, to association, to the pursuit of happiness in God. We thank you for those and we pray that they'll always be protected by our government. We thank you for those, the men that are gathered here today to discuss the matters that are important to the public. We pray especially right now for Jason Venable and his family, as his father's been injured. We pray that you'll be with his family and comfort them and guide them, be with those that are ministering to Mr. Venable, pray that they'll use their skills to heal him and as we know that you can. So be with the whole family in these difficult times. Watch over us, help us and save us in Christ's name.
Amen.
Let it just be the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, will literally be the best for our world.
If that was the approval of the agenda, we'd have a lot of ideas over the agenda this afternoon. Any changes before we proceed? Have a motion to approve the agenda presented. Motion for a second, sir. Any discussions? All those, did they ever say aye? I don't have a vote saying aye. Okay. Have no one signed up to speak, so we'll move right into our discussion items. The first item is regarding the tower agreement. We have leased space for several years for the use of our towers, which operate our public works, radios, EMA and several different agencies. I'm not sure if the sheriff's department has their radios with ours or not. Anyways, we were, we have been in the past utilizing a tower in section and a tower in Putman Mountain. Both of those landowners have asked that we move the locations of the towers and the contracts for those are coming up. Actually, one of them has completed and the other one will be over in August and we're working to get that tower down. We do need a location to move these towers to. Mr. Thompson has agreed to work with us in putting these units on the towers at Piscina and that mountain. And of course, this agreement basically outlines that process. You see the, on the second page, item number nine identifies the total cost per year for this space. We were paying for two separate towers and of course, that cost is combined for this, these two locations under one contract. We had those contracts before, two of them. So with that, I'll just open up for any questions or comments on this. I think we've already moved all the units from section to Piscina. I think we're in the process of moving those units from Putman Mountain out to that mountain.
I noticed that we'll be doing the attachment of our antennas. Is that correct?
That we'll have to take those down?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Do we do that in house? Do you have to get somebody to do that?
We have to have someone to take those down from the tower, the tower that's in place where it's in the whole truck.
Are we putting them, that we're taking them down and moving them good?
Yes. There are several other agencies that are on that tower, however, we're not responsible. And I believe Mr. Thompson is working with them to try to find a suitable solution, whether it be on one of his towers or somebody else. The only other issue that we'll run into, we will have to, if we enter into the agreement and get this, these items moved to that mountain, we will need to remove the tower from Putman Mountain, which depending on the way we approach that may encourage a loss, but I'll be prepared to get at that process. Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then I'd like to place that on the agenda for next Monday night and proceed with it. Okay, next item is regarding the Servpro agreement. And you have in your package, should have a copy of the questions or the answers to several questions we had with Mr. Pittsburgh from Servpro the last time when we discussed it. You also have a second quote from Bryant Seating and Cooling for the process, similar process to what was presented by Servpro. I will note that the quote from Bryant Seating and Cooling does not include the sealing of the, of the spray sealing, I guess, that Mr. Pittsburgh mentioned is included. They are going to get an additional quote on that to include that with this portion. If you have the original contract, we'll let you go. So I think everybody had received this email with the responses regarding the questions, but we'll open this back up for discussion and see how we'd like to proceed. Any questions or comments? Again, I think it's something that's necessary that we do. I think it's beneficial to the health of our employees as well as to the maintenance of our courthouse and has the potential to save us some costs in energy. I don't think they'll pay for the project. I think it will assist in maybe for the project. No other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pittsburgh for the proposal. If there's no objection, I'd like to hand that to you on the agenda next Monday night. Next item is regarding County Road 95 matching funds. Mr. White.
I've got that. I believe all y'all have a copy of this agreement I'd emailed to Hannah. This is up in the Bryant area, Mr. Guzzo's district. We were previously commissioned and approved to pave this road using federal funds. We've got that project ready to, it's scheduled to be bid the last part of this month, that it will be bid in Montgomery. What this is, is the original agreement between the ALDOT and us, cover the financing of the construction cost for the project. If you turn over page two, if you haven't, the total cost of this project, everything is going to be a million and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. That's the estimated cost of, that could change a little bit, one way or the other, depending on what the bid's coming at. If it is this cost, our matching funds would be in the amount of two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. And you know, of course, that will change some, but that's kind of ballpark. I've got the resolutions and everything. I'll give them to Mr. Manning before we leave, the originals now for, for next week's meeting. We require a resolution and I've got all those prepared and give to him and ask y'all if you would approve it and then for the meeting next week.
Questions or comments?
Mr. White, do that law that we pay all the bills up front, get reimbursed, is it in effect?
These are exempt.
These are exempt?
They're exempt.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any projects having federal or state, I believe the state matching, you read the law yet?
Yeah.
I know federal money, we don't have to, we have, they handle that money down there. They handle all the pay-in down there. We don't have to.
That'll be for all the local money that we use when we pay the debt quicker according to that law, what I understand?
Yeah, if we, if we got a local project, we have to pay it quicker, you know, according to that, according to that new law. And I'm sure Mr. Porter, I know Mr. Porter sent out an email on, he's probably familiar with it too. But this money here, we send it directly into Montgomery and they, they put, well, they're eighty percent and they take care of how long the expense pay.
Okay, thank you.
Were these funds set aside with other projects of a previous group or what was planned for Montgomery's project?
We discussed it in there, Chairman, and I don't, I don't believe we included, we were just going to take it directly out of one sixteen, I believe was the last discussion we had. And I could be wrong, but I believe that's.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to consider that funding and see what other possible funding sources might be able to set. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Anything else?
We will, I'll say this, we will need to approve this by next Monday night in order to make the deadlines to get the money till for bid on the end of July.
Any other questions? If there's no objection, then we'll place that on the agenda next Monday or tomorrow. Next item, hiring temporary workers for public work.
I've got several, I was following, I've got a little packet here, so y'all can pass around. First page covers that and some of the subsequent pages covers other stuff. We're discussing temporary workers. We were, we were wanting to ask the commission to consider allowing us to hire eight temporary workers. First of all, I want to say, the first paragraph I got on this, kind of me and Bob have got some different numbers on that, so just kind of ignore it for right now. We're going to work on that and have those numbers ready for you at the next meeting. But the next, the next second paragraph discusses more what we want to do. Y'all aware, we try to run three patch crews and two mowing crews every day and some days we're not able to. But we feel like if we could do this, hire eight temporaries, we would put two on the, on each of the three patching crews, which would require six of the workers. And then we'd put one on each of the two mowing crews, which would require two more. The patch crews, they would basically be shoveling, the patching and mowing crews would be in a pickup truck with the flashers running and what we call peak tailing. And not only this allows to continue to run these crews every day, but also free up some skilled workers that would, that we could put on other areas of doing stuff that there would be also be capable of doing. But y'all can see if, I kind of felt like, you know, time to get all this process approved, maybe we could have, we could have them in place by the first of August and that would give us a couple of months. This fiscal year, based on our, I think our ten dollar hire for temporaries, that would run us about twenty-five thousand dollars for those workers for the two months. I would like to go in and consider we'll keep them at least three or four more months in the next fiscal year because we feel like that'd be about the time of getting around, you know, cool weather and starting to slack off on the work a little bit.
Questions or comments? Maybe something to consider, shorter timeframe this, this summer and then maybe warp that into the budget for next year or year. Any other questions or comments? The big thing, of course, is looking at these dollars and kind of confirming wherever we're at, kind of the dollars for this, but looking at that and all things looking okay there, is there any objection to placing this on the agenda next Monday night? If we discuss this. All right, if there's no objection, then we'll place that on the agenda next Monday. Okay, next item, not going to move for public work.
We've, we've continued looking into this. We found a company, I don't really have a whole lot for you on that, I've got a copy of equipment. There's a company in, in addition to hiring for paint and any of them equipment, a company in Chattanooga we found called Nichols that also manufactures them. Mr. Guzzo, are you familiar with them, Nichols Equipment? Single director of that company. We found prices ranging anywhere from around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty-thousand dollar range for a larger truck that we talked about. And now we get one, I mentioned before with all the bells and whistles, it gets as high as two-hundred thousand. Or we did find the one truck, the used truck, smaller truck, sixty-two thousand dollars for a used model. That's the only one we've really been finding is used. We got to look and check it on a little further. This truck's got a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. That's a lot of miles for a, for a government to have on, a lot of treatment of it. But if, if y'all want us to proceed forward, you know, we're going to put out a bid, no matter what, I can put out a bid that would cater towards the used size, side of it, or we could go with the new. And I know the truck Mr. Levell found was, that was on JCTW, I mean NJPW, it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, had a little bit smaller bed than what we need. Of course, they could, you know, we'll send bids out, all of that, you know, be sure we cover everybody. But I didn't, I guess if the commission wants to proceed, it's what we need, I need some guidance on what y'all approve, is, you know, want me to, want me to bid, place on the amount.
We've not, none of the companies you talked to are on any approved bid list, don't have the products that are approved?
No, no. We are, we are looking at putting, we've mentioned it in the state a little bit, I know a community that does ACCA bid and we talked about trying to get them there, but that'd be so far out that we'd probably not want to wait on that.
Pleasure, any comments?
I personally want to say it's a big town and I just think it pays itself. Yeah.
I'm sorry. What I'd like to do, if we chose to go with a new route, you know, we'll bid one out with like a thirty yard body on it and then we'll, we'll say, how much more would it be if we put a forty yard on there? Because I know that was a lot of a discussion, so we just, you know, we'll handle it that way.
Mr. Manning, do you think there'd be any federal assistance or grants or anything for us looking to get them for the storm cleanup of our county? Do you think you'd like that, would you say anything that would jump up? I'm just, I was just curious if, if us not having any equipment, if there's anything out there that would help us?
The mayor looking at Jake, he looks to see that he wants out there.
If not, now we do have the equipment and go through with cleanup and things like that, can't we charge on some of these disaster areas? Something you could reclaim.
Sometimes it's feeably reimbursed if we declare a disaster area.
In these small incidents, in these small.
Small things, nothing really, right?
I'm sorry.
In these small incidents, it'd be.
No, no. We just, we talked about life, I mean, you know, we just, we don't want to get into, we're going out and, you know, cleaning up right of ways that people, we want people to understand, we don't want them, you know, this is not something to pick up stuff that's dumped on the right of way, this is for storms and stuff of that nature. It's not going to be used. I know like the city uses theirs, it wouldn't be for that purpose.
What we can do, I think we can go ahead and bid this out, we need to look at those opportunities for grants, but if you could get together kind of the specs and get that to the commissioners to take a look at, and we'll kind of go from there as far as the bid process and in the meantime, we'll also look for.
And get together some specs. We're going to try to, we've got, as mentioned, we've, you know, talked to three companies and we're going to try to just make them as generic specs as we can, so all three of them've got equal opportunity to bid. Okay, we'll do that.
If there's no objection, then we'll proceed like that. Hey, next item, solid waste management plan in the public hearing.
Yeah, y'all recall, we've been working on this for the entire year. We've advertised everything, ADM has approved our draft management plan and the celeste VSA will be up here next month and will be conducting a public hearing during a regular meeting. We've done all the advertising, all that's necessary for that. Just want to make y'all aware of that, so you'll be ready for next meeting.
Any questions on that? Next item, public works, Mack truck program.
I've got, I think I've got that in the packet I just handed out to you. Kind of goes over some numbers. The truck market has exploded with Wood Auction Company, he called me last week. Some of the trucks, like we, we purchased paying like a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for these trucks. Last sale down in Montgomery a few weeks ago, some of those trucks brought as high as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They averaged between a hundred and forty-five and a hundred and fifty, they had one that brought a hundred and fifty thousand. And so the market has exploded, you know, it's just, I think it's a good time to sell our trucks. I kind of went through it here, our current two thousand and fourteen trucks that we purchased in the spring of two thousand and thirteen, they are fourteen models, we paid four hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and twenty-two for. Wood Auction is going to guarantee us that they bring five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, which is thirty-three thousand more dollars than we give for, and you have to take their commission. They get a seven percent sale fee, gets you down to four eighty-six. That's the minimum I think they'll be at. If they continue like they're doing, you know, this number could be a lot more, but we're guaranteed that amount, that we'll get that amount, we send our trucks down there. To replace, we'll, net guarantee, net minimum guarantee will be four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. To replace these fourteen trucks with two thousand and fifteen trucks and a low boy tractor would be four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So the most that we would be out is about seven thousand dollars for forty trucks, new warranty and no miles. I don't think we'll be out anything. I think we're actually, and Russ actually thinks, Russ Woods, he actually thinks we'll probably make it along, but that's the, that's the guarantee right there on the truck.
Are these vehicles paid for now or do we still have?
We, we still owe, I think, two.
One or two?
One or two.
Sorry.
I looked up solid waste trucks and I was going to look up them and I forgot to. We're still owe a little bit on them. And the way, the way the process works is these are financed with Bancor, like we always have, whenever we sell them, Woods sells them, they take care of all that through Bancor and all, Woods pays off Bancor and then we get what's, you know, what's left after paying. They owe, that's just kind of a courtesy they do for sending their trucks to them. Makes us save a lot of paperwork on, on Mr. Manning and the county.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? What would we need to do to proceed with that? Is that a bid process that we need to proceed with?
No, these, all these trucks are actually bid on the ACCA bid, that's where we always bid them and I just, we're just need approval from the commission to proceed forward with it and going, what I need to do, we need to go in and order those new trucks and y'all would approve me ordering new trucks and, and sign an agreement with Auction Company to, to sell our old truck.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll put that on the agenda for next Monday also. Okay, next item, roll off containers.
No, you missed one. Garbage trucks.
Sorry, garbage truck.
Yeah, okay. Similar situation to, to the Mack truck. Kind of bring y'all up to date on the history. Back in February of two thousand and eleven, we purchased our first pair of U auto loader trucks. We purchased our next pair in November two thousand and eleven. Purchased our last pair in February two thousand and thirteen. What we'd like to do is, looking back at the ones we originally purchased in February two thousand and eleven, we, these trucks has got about, about eighty-seven thousand miles on them now, about five thousand hours. Not a lot of miles, but it is a lot of hours. We put more hours than what normal people does based on the amount of miles. We, we purchased these trucks at a cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. We, we made our last payment on these trucks, we, I bought one of these trucks when I bought this first round, we financed one, made our last payment on it in February this year. We would like to look at selling these two trucks, there's a lot of time by our max and purchasing two new ones. Wood Auction Company also, and you've got an email, I've got garbage trucks right at the top of it. Wood Auction Company says they believe they will range in the hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty thousand dollar range and they would guarantee us a hundred and fifteen if we chose to do that. The, let's see here.
I understand what you said. You said we'd give two hundred and twenty-five thousand for these trucks.
Give two twenty-five.
And now would we guarantee two hundred and thirty thousand?
We guarantee a hundred and fifteen. We give two twenty-five a piece.
Oh, okay, okay. That's why I'm missing two thousand. We gave one a piece.
Two twenty-five a piece. We've had them about three and a half years, so you can see that the value has started going down quickly.
Why are we not doing these every year like our dump trucks if, if we're making money?
They, they don't sell like dump trucks do. The market's not there for it. I would have, you know, we, we talked about doing this last year before we done the ones, you know, we decided not to.
Is the replacement cost the same? Replacement cost?
Uh, no sir, that's a good question. I was going to bring it up. The last, the last two we brought was two forty-two a piece, which was back in last year, so they went up some. But at the same time, you know, when we go to sell those, they're about, you know, they're rainbow. But the reason I brought this up, Daryl and I was discussing this and these two trucks are, we've got the extended warranty on them, which is going to cover any big cost, but we're starting to get a lot of little stuff that's going on with them. You look at our maintenance report for this past year and see, they've been, they've been up there several times to get little stuff done that we, you know, we can't do, computer stuff or, you know, stuff that Mack has to do. But just something I wanted you to, you know, think about, the, we'll see, see how we proceed. Of course, the sale is in, last, mid-part of September, I believe.
Will they reimburse our warranty? That we just bought them those hooks remaining? If we sell those, we're getting our money back?
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's not a Mack warranty from the call. We have to go, go out to get another warranty.
Does the buyer?
It goes with the truck, it goes with the truck, which would help to sell the truck.
Does, I'd like to see what we spent, you know, the maintenance budget on this.
I can tell you it's about, we've spent, we've spent close to twenty thousand, but about twelve of that has been warranted, so we've, we've been out about eight thousand on each truck. But that's just this year, you know, we ain't for a full year yet, but that don't count a lot of, you know, they're getting, you know, that don't count the record bill for we had to go get them a time or two or the downtime with employees.
Is, is this something that we could do at the end of this month and still be on time that give us a month of August to get in with?
I, I know we could do it as far as getting them to sale, that wouldn't be a problem, but I, I'd need to call the guy and see how much notice it would need to get the D ones in here because we can't, we can't be down, we can't be without a truck, without two trucks. And what I'd like to do, I can check on that and have all that for you, man.
What's the physical appearance of these trucks? Do they look rough?
The trucks we got, no sir, we, you know, we, we wash them and everything once a week, maintain them, they look good. They're really, they're really good-looking trucks for what they've got on. I'd like for you to come down and look at them Friday about lunch sometime. They look terrible Thursday because of being in the mud, trash and all that, but Friday after lunch, they, they look good. Every Friday after lunch.
Any other questions?
So your recommendation is if we wait, we wait to lose the money, it would wait, sounds to me like we wait another year, we're going to really drop.
Well, I, I don't know, Commissioner, if it would drop that much more or not, it's just, I think it's more the maintenance thing that we're.
I was talking about that we had the maintenance and the drop today.
Yeah, maintenance drop.
That money is going to be.
See, like this time last year, you know, I talked to them, I think we all, you know, we discussed it a little bit, we were looking at about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty last year on these trucks. So, you know, you kind of.
So that's grossed out forty-two thousand dollars plus the ten thousand, maybe that's fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. But I'd like if it pleased y'all, it'll have y'all to put it on the agenda for money and I'll try to have all the information and we can vote yea or nay.
When are you looking at replacing the other two twenty-elevens?
They're actually, they're a year in year, they're as far enough down the line as a year in year, so maybe, maybe, what we'd like to do is get in a, in a pattern of replacing, you know, a year from now and then the last two the next year.
Will the garbage trucks, the funds have to come out of solid waste or some of this can come out of capital burden?
I think all of this would have to come from solid waste and we just.
Should we supplement out capital burdens or is it so cheap? It's an asset.
I don't think so, but we'll just start to look at that and see. We'll check and see.
Maybe, you know, I said, maybe the two that we sell would be enough to buy for once.
No, if there's no objection, I'd, I'd like to proceed with it, we'll place this on the agenda depending on the information we receive on the dollar amounts and as soon as you get that, if you can send it to us, and I'd like to sit down with Bob and kind of take a look at that budget.
Okay. I print it off, I print it off where we kind of stay not busy, but where we're at on our balance on solid waste and I know Bob's got that.
The balance is one thing, we've got to stay with the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Next items, roll off the thing.
Y'all asked us to kind of keep track of people calling in, and it's actually fell off from ministry, we're not getting a lot of calls. I think y'all have a copy of that there, NJP at the top, NJPA, two hundred and sixty-one thousand for the trucks and twenty roll offs. We're talking, and I'll just tell you the conversation I have with Darryl today, to us, the garbage trucks is more important than the roll offs. You know, we'd like to put a priority over them, you know, if we want to go one way or other. The roll offs, like I said, we're not getting as many calls as we was, but probably a lot of, you know, word got out, we don't have. But I just wanted to bring it back to you, I told you I had a report back to you on it, and this is not something that would have, you know, the timeframe on it by the garbage trucks, it was just a big decision y'all would make.
Roll offs be handy, you know, during the storm of the buckabunga?
Were you a kid?
You know, we were there.
Yes, the question, are we, are we overstaffed at all, solid waste?
Yeah, about, probably, maybe one, two working.
You know, I wonder if we shouldn't, I mean, if we got people, this is a good opportunity, would we be making money for solid waste and keeping them, do you think they'd be enough for that one or two people to stay busy?
On a, yeah, on a, on a perfect day, we have, we have got one, you know, they're usually cleaned up or something like that. If we have a truck driveway out, you know, we've got, we've got to pull them in, you know, because we can't shut it out there. We've got to keep, we've got to keep at least one of them, and right now, we've, you know, we've probably got two.
That's what makes it, it's not start, we're just...
That's in addition, we're utilizing public works.
And if the committee would take a look at that during the recommendations to the commission, or wherever you want to go, that it would be a revenue source if we did start providing for this in the county. I believe the county's legal department is starting to provide that too, as well as the county, he's got those, Paul, that's moving into, we can test that stuff. Look at that, and we'll try to get something maybe by the end of this month, and make a decision if we want to go, if anyone owes a proceeding like that. All right, move on to Jackson County Park Map.
What's the profile of this country, Southeastern Publications, they do campground and park maps? I don't know if y'all got a copy of this or not, in your packet. It must be a great display, but they come, they, they come in and they, they map the campground and the park out. As far as I know, the contract states it's supposed to be free, this is something that we're going to have to look over. For a smaller area like ours, probably one of those smaller maps, and the people that pay for it is those people with the advertisements, right? We would get about three thousand maps, and I think this is a yearly contract deal. And the only thing they charge for, like I say, Mr. Porter would have to look it up, is that you would have to give them two weeks of stay at the park, which is, be around three hundred and fifty dollars.
You're talking about give them?
Yeah, give, the people that would come in and map, and do the map, they would have to have two weeks of stay at the park.
And that would be the only cost?
As far as I know, Mr. Porter, but we need to get Mr. Porter to work over this contract, make sure.
How many folks you talking about? One spot?
One spot. Two, thank you, we took them, but just one spot.
Questions or comments on this?
I like it, I think we get some candy.
I think they cost the same thing, you know, they're one spot.
They got a lot, I was looking through, they got a nice painting on there, something like that. And what they want to cover every year, so, you know, you may do some upgrades. I guess, did you get a copy, Mr. Porter?
Any other questions? We have time to review this, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next Monday, see if there are any other concerns, questions on it. Next item regarding the roadblock policy. You have in your package a copy of something that has been put together, it's not what's in force right now, we've had to go by these guys on that, but the commission is not adopting it yet. I believe Mr. Duffy has wanted to bring this up for discussion, concerns from this weekend?
Yeah, we had an incident at home, said that we're, a church had come from Santa Alabama that found out it wasn't even a, a church after they got investigated, taking that money. I think we want, we need to tighten up the, how we do these. They also, even by our own policy, they were kids, between the ages of three and five years old, taking that money on the yellow line. I don't know what the perfect answer is, but we're going to have to do something.
The sheriff's department didn't move it?
Yeah, yeah. If you got any ideals, any suggestions you would like to put out on it?
We've got some agencies that, like volunteer fire departments, that don't even call for a permit, and they don't set up at intersections, they set up in the middle of the road and stop people everybody comes by, which I don't see their authority to do that.
I've discussed the, with some of those fire departments, the big question really, Mr. Porter, is what authority do we have in a lot of these roadblocks? Again, the sheriff's department worked very well with this authority coming out when there is an issue, and, and the way we handle it now is that we will give a permit if they call in, we'll give a permit for qualified agencies. And a lot of them, you know, in certain areas, at certain times, of course, they do, we do require, they do have on their reflective vest and all that, or we're essentially going by this, but again, nothing's been, as I understand, officially adopted by the commission.
Right, it ought to be, and any permits are issued ought to have indemnization laws in them, indemnifies the county from anybody getting hurt, because, I think that'd be the biggest thing as far as I can see.
Does the sheriff have the authority to draw a citation when you have children that are under age of eighteen up in the road?
It was just a matter of traffic control, and I don't think the sheriff doesn't, whether they're eighteen or not, I think it'd be a violation of their permit. A violation of the permit, but I don't think there's any violation of state law that we, plus I don't know what authority we have on a state highway to remove somebody from there, if the state didn't want to do anything about it.
But I think this one, now, most of them are on state highways, like state highways, but this one actually happened on a county road.
Who, who would be responsible for verifying that it's a, a, the agency or whoever's having the road block or something?
The, the way that we've handled the process and the commission on this would be that they have the biggest information showing that they're a nonprofit agency, and the purpose for the, for the roadblock, and then, you know, approve on a case-by-case basis there.
Close enough, I need a permit.
There is no, if they don't, if they don't receive one that's outside of this, the, the problem is going back to the enforcement portion of it, and some type of ramifications if they do have, not abide by this, what, what are the possibilities? Would we have to get local law passed to have it be the policy that we want?
I think you could probably, and I'd have to look at this, because again, it does deal with traffic control, on county roads at least, and probably state highways within the county, we're responsible for the traffic control. But we, there may be a possibility that the commission could adopt a resolution that puts some enforcement provisions in this process, but I'd have to look at it and see if the county does have that part.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, is on our current policy, I'd like to see it changed to, instead of emailing permits or giving them a number, they have to physically come to the courthouse and lift the permit. I think that would deter some of the, of what we got going on. You know, we'll make it a little more interesting, but if you're really doing it for word of the call, it shouldn't be that big a problem to come to the courthouse and get the permit.
If there's what, based, again, this is something that's been kind of put together, some ideas have come together, if everyone will look over that, if that's the direction that we want to move in, and if there are any ideas or anything to supplement this, Mr. Porter, if you would check and see what can be done, and then we can have him put together a resolution outlining this, and I agree with you that they need to come and actually pick up a permit. Any other questions or comments on that? But if you can check on that, and see what the possibilities are.
Where do we put this back on?
I'd say let's plan for the first, or maybe the next work session meeting, we've got a lot going on, so we'll try to have this at the next work session, then discuss again. Any other questions or comments? Move on to our reports, Mr. Manning, Mr. Wyler?
No, sir.
Mr. Porter?
Oh, I can.
You can?
No, sir.
Mr. Rogers? We will have a budget here in the following, Mr. Miller, can I say?
No, sir.
Mr. Duffy?
No, sir.
Mr. Level?
No, sir.
I would like to note two things, we've been approved for two grants, received notification for, one in cooperation with the City of Scottsboro. That grant was for five hundred thousand dollars, it's eighty-twenty, so the county is responsible for a hundred thousand, and that was for the downtown sidewalk project, so that's a good thing, both ourselves and the City of Scottsboro were approved for that grant. It's a million dollars towards the project, and they're looking at another two hundred thousand dollar grant also, so that will be a very good project when that comes about. I believe, we talked about it, probably next year before the project gets started, we'll be doing the work in the meantime. Again, as agreed upon by the resolution that was passed, the county will be out no more than a hundred thousand, our portion of our grant that was received, so that's really good news on receiving that. Also, we've received, Mr. Wyler brought to me, my attention, we received a small portion, we had applied for three hundred thousand, but received sixty-three thousand for our recycling program, which again, that's going to help us quite a bit expand that program. We've got to determine what we want to use that for, whether it be all for trailers, or whether we want to purchase, well, I guess this says for, is it limited to trailers?
I think it is, I, I got that right before came, I had a chance to talk to him.
We'll find that out, but either way, have to add a few more sites, locations as far as our recycling, so that'll be beneficial in expanding recycling through the county, trying to keep more locations, so that's another positive thing to consider there. All right, that concludes all the items on our agenda, so we'll recess, motion for recess, we'll head downstairs for the legislative motion of the Senate, all of the senators, aye.